At this time, we would like to have a state of emergency update from Bill Webb, our health officer, and Wayne Darrell, the Director of Emergency Services.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
I saw that Sandra had a PowerPoint presentation. I think it's a PowerPoint presentation.
I do.
I am not going to use that presentation because that's dated the 12th and the situation is rapidly evolving. I have some notes. I want to talk a little bit about the background of the virus and also, you know, the recommendations that have been published in numerous sites. I think that the vast majority of folks are aware of these, but I do want to take the opportunity to reiterate it in this forum so that they know what we're advocating as the Health Department and where we're getting our sources of information. First, I want to thank you for inviting me today. I also want to thank all of the people who are attending remotely and have chosen not to be here. That's a wise maneuver. That is in following with the guidance that we're recommending. So, the first thing to talk about is just a general overview of what COVID-19 is. It's a respiratory disease caused by a novel coronavirus. It emerged in China early in December of last year, and it is spreading like wildfire. It is, you know, a situation that is rapidly evolving. At this point, in Kent County, we have not had a confirmed positive case. I'm expecting a positive case to occur any day now. You know, it's only a matter of time before, you know, we have confirmation that the disease is here in the county. Obviously, you know, the first case was confirmed March 5th, and community spread in Maryland was verified on the 12th. At this point, you know, it's, we are preparing for, you know, for it to be in the county and also for the Health Department and emergency operations to respond. But before I get into that, I just want to, you know, briefly cover some of the symptoms of what an infection of the COVID-19 virus represents. It's a respiratory problem. It causes fever, coughing, shortness of breath, in more severe cases, pneumonia, which is an infection of the lungs. How is it spread? It spreads mostly through interpersonal contact, close interpersonal contact. We think that it is, you know, it is spread mostly through respiratory droplets that are excreted when an infected person coughs or sneezes. But it also can be transmitted from, you know, the droplets landing on a surface and someone else touching that surface and then, you know, touching their face, their mouth, their nose, and, you know, it being transmitted through, you know, touching the surfaces that have the virus on it. So currently, as you're aware, there are no vaccinations, as you may be aware. There are no vaccinations or medical treatments to treat the specific virus infection itself. And that's one of the reasons why the governor and the president have issued the state of emergency because the best response that we can muster at this point is, you know, the message of social distance. So, the folks who are great, let me talk about the group that is at greatest risk at this point. You know, nobody has immunity to this virus. Nobody's body has encountered the virus before, so there isn't any native immunity in our population for it. The folks who are at greatest risk are adults over the age of 60 and individuals who have pre-existing medical conditions. And as you are aware, in Kent County, 26% of our population is over the age of 60. So we have, you know, we have a significant number of our citizens who are at risk of developing, if they contract the disease, you know, developing, you know, a severe case of this particular virus. The general recommendations from, you know, the Health Department and from the Centers for Disease Control, best solution that we have are called non-pharmaceutical interventions. It's very low-tech stuff. It's, you know, wash your hands often with soap and warm water for at least 20 seconds. If you don't have access to that, please use an alcohol-based sanitizer that has at least 60% alcohol. Please use good cough etiquette. You know, sneeze into a, cough or sneeze into a tissue, into your elbow. Avoid touching your face, eyes, nose, or mouth. You know, clean frequently and disinfect, you know, high-touch surfaces such as desktops, doorknobs, and chairbacks. Okay? The important, and one of the most important things is social distancing. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Avoid, you know, we want you to avoid nonessential travel or group activities that involve crowds. At this point, the governor's executive order has really, his series of executive orders have really had a significant impact on encouraging people to stay at home. We, you know, the Health Department and myself have been encouraging people, if you feel sick, you know, please stay at home. There are many people who can have a mild case of this illness and be out and about in the community and generally function as, you know, effectively, but they're also at risk of spreading the disease. I'm encouraging, you know, folks at this point to have an adequate supply of food, water, medication, and household supplies. And one of the most important things that I would like to communicate today about, you know, about this situation is to help address some of the community panic that is happening. Right now, there is, you know, there is a lot of anxiety about the closures, about the spread of the disease. You know, at this point, I'm confident that our community will come through this, that we will, we will get to the other side of it. What the goal of all of these activities that we're doing to keep people at home are to reduce the spread of the disease and the impact on our healthcare system. So, what most people who get sick from this disease only have mild symptoms, and they're able to make a full recovery. So, this is, you know, this is a serious situation, and it's something that we are going to get through. You know, the Health Department and our community has been through this before with other viruses, with other diseases. Really, nothing, you know, what's happened in the last week and a half is unprecedented in my personal experience. It is, you know, it's, it's very aggressive, what the actions that the governor has taken, but I think that the situation merits such actions. So, I guess at this point, you know, I want to give you an update on some of our community challenges that we have. You know, the anxiety and the panic that I mentioned, please, you know, we want you, we want the public to stay informed of the situation. Use reputable sources to get your information. We encourage you, all of our citizens, to access information from the CDC, the Maryland Department of Health, the Kent County Health Department webpage, or if you don't have a computer, please call 211. The 211 line has dial-in information if you have general questions about that. Okay, so, one of the, one of the big concerns that we have been dealing with in the last five days involves lab testing for, you know, for our citizens. This disease has outpaced any of our capabilities with, in regards to lab, you know, lab capacity, the supplies that are needed, and so we have been working with local, federal, and state organizations, you know, to get lab testing available for our citizens. At this point, we, you know, the five, the five county health departments of the mid-shore, Kent, Queen Anne's, Caroline, Talbot, and Dorchester are looking to set up a testing site at Chesapeake College starting on Friday, and that will be a drive-up testing site. And it, I have to, you know, have to be clear that to get tested, you need to see your primary care physician and, you know, get a, get a lab order from your primary care physician. This is not, you know, this is, this is an effort where we can pool our resources as local health, health departments to improve the efficiency and the availability of lab tests that are needed in the community. Lab tests at this point are, you know, the testing kits are in short supply. There is a worldwide shortage of viral transport media. But the good news is that our commercial labs are rapidly increasing their capacity almost on a daily basis, you know, to get more testing kits available and also to get them out to the public. Let's see here. Another, another challenge that we have from a community perspective involves personal protective equipment that our healthcare providers or EMS responders need to protect themselves. You know, our healthcare providers are, you know, right in the middle of this, and, you know, the best protection that they have is this equipment. It typically involves a mask, a face shield, a gown, and gloves. There is a, there is a significant shortage, you know, nationwide for these resources. One of the things that we, you know, we are working with our commercial suppliers, we are working with the, you know, the Emergency Operations Center, where, you know, the state is working with the Strategic National Stockpile to get resources for personal protective equipment to our healthcare providers. Okay, the other thing that, you know, I want to mention about personal protective equipment is masks for community members. At this point, masks are encouraged, we are encouraging masks to be worn by citizens who are sick or have symptoms of a respiratory disease. Masks are not encouraged for our citizens who are healthy. We encourage, you know, the evidence shows that regular surgical masks, dust masks that you get from a hardware store, provide little protection for someone who is healthy. But what the masks for the people who are sick, the idea is when they cough, it helps keep the respiratory droplets contained, you know, close to the individual who is sick and thereby limits the spread. So, we are asking, you know, we are asking folks that if they go out or they need to see a physician and they're not feeling well, that, you know, masks then are appropriate. So, one of the, I guess, the message that I want to convey, one of the things I want to read to you is the guidance that has been sent out by the Department of Health to all of our primary care, all of our clinicians regarding testing. You know, there has been, you know, there has been a significant demand for testing, and the guidance that has been sent out, it's important for everyone to know when it's appropriate to be tested and, you know, when it may not be appropriate. And I'm going to read these verbatim because it is important. I don't want, you know, I don't want, I don't want it to be misquoted. So, the guidance that we have, the first, the first point is that asymptomatic persons do not need to be tested. So, if you think you've been exposed, but you have no symptoms, you have no fever, you have no cough, you do not need to be tested. Mildly symptomatic patients who are otherwise healthy can self-quarantine, monitor their temperature and symptoms, and check in with the provider as needed. These patients do not need to be tested. The third point is patients who have severe symptoms, such as difficulty breathing, should seek care immediately. Older patients and individuals who have underlying medical conditions who are also immunocompromised should contact their physician early in the course of even the mild illness. In most situations, those patients will need to be evaluated in the emergency department. And I'm sure that you'll have questions about that later. At this point, I'm not, I have other guidance related to community events, but that has, you know, this is from a couple of days ago. I encourage everyone to follow, you know, follow the governor's executive orders related to social distancing and bars and restaurant closures, gym closures, and group sizes. The Health Department has actively worked in the last two weeks with our healthcare partners in long-term care, in the school system, with camps, with our law enforcement and first responders, you know, to make sure that they get the message about, you know, what this disease is, how it's spread, and how it may impact. The, so, my final, well, my final thoughts about, you know, that I want to convey is that this is a serious and rapidly changing situation that merits the response that has occurred. I encourage all citizens not to panic and to stay informed. Most people who catch this virus suffer mild symptoms and make a full recovery. Kent County has a history of community strength and cohesiveness. I'm confident that we will face down this crisis and emerge using our collective and collaborative ingenuity. There is no place I would rather be right now than in Kent County.
Bill covered quite a bit of what I was going to speak about, so I'm just going to let you know what we're doing here as far as the county's concerned. In consultation with the Commissioner's Office, Bill, last Friday, we opened up the emergency operations center, and what we call a partial opening, in that we're using our emergency management staff, and we're not bringing the rest of our group, which could be like 25 people who were full. We're not bringing everybody in. At this time, we're doing virtual with the Health Department as Bill's the lead, Social Services, Public Schools, the hospital, law enforcement, EMS, and the County Commissioner's Office. Within that group, we've set up a joint information center so we can handle press requests and put out a message if we have to for any events that happen. So, in that, the county has responded as it has in the past in different instances in a credible way. We had a director's meeting here last Friday. In that group, we asked for county employees if there were other missions that we had to do for them, to make sure that they're aware of that, and the response is always good. If we have to do something else because of what we normally do, if we have to feed, if we have to transport, there's going to be people to take care of that. So, we'll be making those arrangements if the time comes. The school board, as you know, I'm sure you know, but I make sure everybody's aware of it. The school board's starting today is doing lunches at three elementary schools, also in Millington, at a community center, and at Woods Edge, serving lunches for kids 18, under 18. Anybody that's under 18 can go get the lunch, and they're also giving them a carry-away breakfast for the next day. And then on Friday, they're doing a backpack sort of things for the weekend to keep kids healthy. Our first responders, there's a lot of pressure on them right now, as you know. The daycare situation, that's one that Michelle has been working on with the Governor's Office. It's been high on everybody's list. We think we have some resources for first responders and for medical personnel to, if there's a need for daycare so that they can come to work. We're working on that. I think we might have a solution for that. We'll speak to that later when we're sure about it. What you'll be seeing from the 911 center, if somebody calls 911, is for a law enforcement call or EMS call, our last question's going to be, is there anybody at the scene who has a fever or has a cough? And to answer that as a yes, then we give that information to our first responder so that they can don the proper protective equipment to protect themselves and the patients and exposure when they get to the hospital. There's procedures at the hospital so that we notify them, so they're ready to receive and to protect those people there also. So that's what we're doing. You all will be receiving a daily situation report from us, and we're happy to give that to you, but we're also happy if you have any questions at any time during the day. Especially for something that you're hearing that doesn't sound right, please call and ask because there's a lot of misinformation out there. We still have no results on the student from Austin College. I was told on the way in here that the radio station's reporting that was positive. It's not. We still have no results yet. So, if there's information out there that needs to be vetted, please go through us. Either through the Health Department or through the EOC will have, will have the updated information for you. If there's any questions, I guess we can take them.
That's a question. To one, I got in an argument with my employees because they said I was wrong about a case positive and can't count it. I'm like, no, there's not. Quit listening to this, not to whatever. Anyway, those people are mild symptoms. Do you have a percentage on that? Like, is it 6% to 8%? Or do we even know that?
That, you know, that's, that's a moving target. I think that the evidence that we have seen from, you know, from other countries, if it's reliable through the news media, is the majority of them. So that would be, you know, over 60%.
Okay. Now, if you say somebody was, was to have mild symptoms, how long does the virus, how long does this virus last? Are they over two weeks or a week? Are they over three weeks? Do we even know that?
Okay, so what I understand the situation is, is that if you're exposed, from the time you're exposed to the virus to the time you first start seeing symptoms is approximately five days. If you develop an illness related to that, you know, the course of the illness, it all depends on individual physiology. You know, it is, you know, it can, it can last two weeks, but what we have found is that in our older population that has to be hospitalized, the course of treatment that they need in the hospital is longer than other similar infections. So, it's, I don't have a definitive answer for you there. It's, you know, we're using, you know, we're using the two-week mark for quarantine for people who are, you know, who are, who think they've been exposed to a positive. And when folks are sick, the current guidance related to, related to when you're free to be, you know, to come out of, you know, come out of isolation, that's a moving target.
Right, that's what I was asking.
You know, is, it used to, you know, two days ago, it was you needed to have two confirmed negative tests to come out of. And, you know, our testing kits are so limited that, you know, testing somebody who's better, who looks like they have been through the worst is not a good utilization of resources. You know, I do not have, you know, the specific guidance at this point is 72 hours, you know, 72 hours fever-free with, with, you know, without taking any medication to, you know, keep your fever down has been, you know, the advice that I have seen as of yet.
So even if you have a mild case, you'll still have a fever?
You may.
And then once your fever's gone for three days, you're probably okay. But that's a guess.
That's, that is a guess.
That's an educated guess.
You know, this, this particular virus, you know, as it emerged three and a half months ago, that, you know, it takes science a while to catch up with, you know, with the actual, with the actual virus. And, you know, I encourage everyone to check the CDC webpage for the information. It's changing almost daily related to, you know, what we know about this virus and what the recommendations are. You know, as, you know, the PowerPoint presentation that was done on the 12th, that's an excellent presentation, but it's already outdated. So...
You have the, you mentioned that you would be setting up a drive-by testing at Chesapeake College. What about those people that can't get to Chesapeake College? Is there any?
Okay, so...
You know, some people may not have, transportation's always a problem in some cases.
We're, we're working on an alternative, you know, plan at this point for those who have no access to transportation, who have the physician's order for the lab test. We're, we're not certain how, you know, how that's going to happen. We're still discussing internally whether we have staff drive down there or whether we have staff, you know, drive the individual down or whether we have, you know, staff go out to the homes and do the specimen collection. We're, we're looking at the guidance and the resources that we have related to that. We recognize that that's a significant problem in our county, and we want to have, have a method for addressing it.
And the other question is, the lunches for the children at the schools, how is, you know, some of them have no means to get there. So how is that? I mean, is there any... I mean, I'm just, you know, you said like Woods Edge, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
A child, I'd say goes to, you know...
Today's the first day, so we're taking, we can request that they see things, issues that come up, and we're going to address them. We're going to make sure...
That's a fluid...
Yeah, it's a fluid thing. Today's the first day. We'll see how it goes. I feel the school, we're not here to speak.
Go ahead.
Myri, can you step up and explain for us what you were recording?
Well, yeah, there's a microphone right there.
Yes. Good morning. So, organizers who have volunteered their time to help with distribution of those breakfast, lunch, grab-and-go bags, they're also currently working on plans to identify drivers who may be able to assist in those efforts and getting meals and other, you know, necessary supplies to those that don't have transportation to these designated distribution locations. So that's in the works. It's developing, you know, as I speak right now. So that is being worked on. There are several partner agencies, Social Action Committee on Racial Justice, Local Management Board, Rising Suns, Echo Hill, Tama, Millington, Community Food Pantry, Social Services, County Public Schools. I may have forgotten a few, but all of those organizations are involved, and there's a, you know, communication within this group that's speaking to that among other things to help fulfill some of the needs that may continue to arise.
So, I mean, it looks like it's being addressed. I used to say this is all a matter of it's fluid. What we think of that, or how we might want to do that, it might be different.
That's individuals calling in. They're hopping onto the bridge.
President Landgraf was planning on calling in, so he, when we're finished coming to a conclusion on this part of the conversation, we may want to let him have an opportunity to speak in case he would like to say anything regarding the college.
I don't have a question, but I'd like to thank Wayne and Mr. Webb for really laying it out, and I think it was a very nice present, a very good presentation, not one we wanted to hear, but I mean, that's, it's, I think it's been a lot of thought put into it, and I'm, as always, proud of Kent County for, for being on top of things, and I think we're doing the best we can. I appreciate you coming in today.
And you need to know that the employees are out there doing their job, Commissioner.
No question.
They're all coming to work. There's a lot of scared people. They're like, asking a lot of questions, and the questions are pertinent. They're coming to work and they're doing the job. So, we're proud of them, honestly.
Well, we certainly appreciate everything they're doing, everything the city you're doing, and going over and beyond. And I'm sure your day isn't starting at 8:30, you know, 4:30.
Well, you know, just to chime in, that, you know, we're working as a community with all of our, you know, public and private agencies, and, you know, there is, the response that has happened, you know, across the board has been truly impressive, and the cooperation the Health Department has received, you know, it makes me grateful to, you know, to be here in Kent County.
We're at the very beginning of the socioeconomic impact of this, and it's going to be...
That's going to be a...
That's going to be a...
And it's going to...
That's going to be, and it's going to require a lot from all of us, and everybody from others.
One other quick question. I think President Trump basically cut this down to 10 people. Is that, I mean, it wasn't an order, from what I understand, but is that, do you think it might end up there, or is that?
At this point, the best protection that we have from this virus is social distancing and good personal hygiene. And, you know, the 10, you know, it's, I've been, I've been asked about this, that's a good question about, so, okay, how big, how big a meeting can we have? And as we're demonstrating here in this meeting, I think there were more than 10 people, but what we're demonstrating is everybody is sitting, except Wayne and myself, are, you know, more than six feet apart, you know, and that if the space where you're having it can accommodate that, that is, you know, that's, that's good. You know, the hard number is, you know, that's something that's flexible depending on the specific meeting. You know, having, you know, 10 people on a subway car that's really small is, you know, that doesn't work versus, you know, a gathering of friends in a three-acre field, you know, that you can put some distance between yourself and the other individuals there. So, you know, I would encourage all of our citizens, you know, to heed the warning and to exercise the social distancing. You know, I think that that is what's going to keep, you know, this virus, you know, at least, you know, in check as much as we possibly can manage.
There's still time, and I say everything I had to, there's still time to get a flu shot. It doesn't do anything for coronavirus, but it might keep you out of the hospital, it might keep your respiratory system, it might keep us from having to respond to your house because you have the flu. So it'll keep you and your family healthier, so. Health Department still has some of them, and that's maybe encouraging for us.
Can you still get them at drugstores and stuff? Like Walgreens used to give them?
I know the health department has the, has both the regular flu shot and the high dose for senior citizens, whether the commercial estab, I don't know about the commercial establishments, and I'm really not even sure about, you know, their practices about letting people into, into the stores, you know, that, they may be changing that, but.
But they, people can come to the health department and get them?
We would do that by appointment, because we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, limit the amount of traffic that comes in.
But you don't, you have a large supply of that.
Yes, we do have a supply of that.
Would you say that people are the most contagious with this when they're running the fever and stuff? Is that when they're?
You know, the evidence that I've read, you know, and that too is a moving target, that's a good question, that the evidence that I've read is that people are most contagious when they start early, when they start feeling symptoms.
So with all the social distancing, you would think that common flu, they jump out of people's paths, but the common flu also?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's positive, if there is one. It's not to spread that also.
Keep my phone away from President Langrath.
Kirk Langrath, how do we do that?
Just talk to him.
Okay, we, I guess, I didn't have a question to you, then. Thank you. Okay, President Langrath, you can go ahead.
Okay, so thank you very much. I just wanted to take a few minutes to just let you know the status of where we are, because there's lots of rumors circulating around, as you know, some newspaper pages. So first of all, we do not have the results back yet of the student who was tested for COVID-19. We expect those results on Thursday. So we will communicate that as soon as we get those. Everyone, please don't let anybody tell you they think they know, because no one knows. Second of all, I want you to know that we made the decision that we're basically not going to bring our students back to campus for this semester. We're going to go to online testing, online teaching. And then I guess third thing I would say that the commissioners just obviously need to know, is we're going to do everything we can to quote "lock down" our campus. We can't have everybody, we can't have people coming into our buildings, we can't have people coming in. We're probably going to have a one entrance off of Washington Avenue for anyone who needs to come onto campus. So we're implementing all of that now, and we have not yet decided on commencement, which of course is a big issue for the Dorchester town because of the economic impact. I will communicate to all of you immediately once we make that decision, but that decision will not be made at least for another month. And that's all I had. I'd be happy to answer any question that you have.
I don't believe we have any questions. We did thank you for coming on and informing us of the circumstances there, and we certainly appreciate it.
Well, thank you all for everything that you're doing. This is a very difficult time for everybody, and we appreciate it. Appreciate every, all the work you do and all the support we get from the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.